We have a court reporter.
That's kind of a second shot.
She's off today. Okay, well, call us maybe in order. You will call, please.
Julie McDonald.
I'm here.
Emma Benfett is absent, excused. Jim C.
Here.
Millie Schoon.
Here.
Michael Hampton.
Here.
Chanel McKinnon.
Here.
Timothy O'Conner.
I'm here.
Court present.
Okay, moving on. Consent agenda?
Move to adopt consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt consent agenda. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Right. Moving on. Hearing from the public. Open for public comment. Anyone on the phone for public comment? Hearing done, we'll move on.
City officials.
What's that?
It's the city officials, your turn.
Where's this at? I don't see that.
Reports from city officials?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're the first one, mayor.
Where is it? Oh, there it is.
You need glasses?
Well, I do, but I'm an outfitter, so I'm a little runny. And I had to cook some baby's 4-gram boys today. Now that goes. Anyway, mayor's been busy fishing and trying to have fire meetings when I can. So we'll move on to city administrators.
Nothing beyond at this point, now my written staff report. Of course, I'm hearing any questions regarding.
Any questions for John as a mayor? Okay, we'll move on to our treasurer.
I submitted a report. Um, we have to adjourn.
Questions for the treasurer? Quoting manager.
I submitted a report. The only update on it is we are going for the junior life serving pass, starting on Monday. We have two right now. Sign up, they have until Saturday if I have, so we'll see what happens. I don't foresee, the few, the handful that we thought we were going to have, a couple of them are out of town, so we'll see what happens with that. But right now, we have two.
What are the ages?
Eleven to fourteen.
Interesting. Any more questions for the quadding lady?
Thinking about doing this one?
Yeah.
You got a third one, right here.
Was it about the junior life serving was the one? You would have been the regular life serving. I would hope so.
Cindy Clark.
Excuse me, excuse me, I have something.
Probably did a written report anyway.
Yes, I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next meeting is the 19th, and I'll be on travel status.
Travel status. Okay. The 19th. Or Kirk instead of Noke.
I will be too.
I will be too.
There won't be a meeting on the 19th.
Took care of that.
Yeah.
There will not be a meeting.
There will not be a meeting on the 19th.
There will be a court.
There won't be a court. We can play poker if you want, yeah. That's it.
Salmon time, hopefully the last six days.
No, hopefully. Okay, we'll move on to city planner.
So our next meeting will be the 2nd, is that correct?
It'll be the first Thursday in June.
September, that'd be the 2nd.
Okay.
If you say so, Terry.
Based upon my iPhone.
Planner?
I submitted a written report. Would you have any answering questions?
Any questions for Brian, other than we have more COVID popping up?
Have you shared that now or later on?
Which do you want?
Probably cover it into the agenda.
All right, what is question?
Our EMS coordinator, Minnie.
She's on the phone.
I'm here.
Okay, what do you got?
I have, in July, we have a total of 19 callouts with 56 total responders to those 19. And we have four responders who have met the 50 or more responses, so they now qualify for the end of the year bonus. We have two that are very close to it and six who are in the 40s. The crew status as of today is P N will be coming back in September. Si is taking his state exam on the 10th. Adora has passed her state exam, but she is needing now to get all of her skills signed up. It will be harder for her because she's working full-time at Peace Health, so we'll get her in whenever she can do it. The rest of the crew is scheduled as responding. It's been a great working relationship in teaching and building our camaraderie together. John and I are responding with our EMS ones so that we can watch their skills and help to develop them out in the field with them. Today, one of my full-time employees has been sent home because of possible exposure to COVID. I've closed my office to the public because we are transferring COVID positive patients, and we may, just because of the Delta variant, we don't know what we're facing. We canceled our monthly training for this next Saturday because of the COVID spread. After COVID, we will be holding the BLS class with Laura so that we can start recruiting more BLS people to come in and take the positions on the crew that Si and Josiah and P N are in currently. We are following the strict guidelines that has been put out by OSHA and CDC for COVID. And we have developed an EMS Facebook page. We're using that page for informational slash educational items only. So if any of you have anything that you'd like to see on that page, please get ahold of me or Si to let us know what you'd like to see. Any questions?
No, Minnie, that sounds really encouraging. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I did the second that. I think it's great that the participation level has jumped way up, and obviously, there's a good working relationship there, so kudos to everybody.
It's been, it's been very good.
Minnie, this is Julie. I did think of one question. Are you still responding with Glock or not?
I personally do not. When Glock does not have a full crew, they call me to let me know that they don't have a full crew, then it becomes Craig's responsibility to cover over there. If that happens, then I, I have to make sure I've got a backup crew here in Craig. So the same thing, it's the same position as if we were going to be doing a medevac to the airport. We have to have a backup crew in Craig because that's our primary responsibility.
And is that happening, you know, in a given month? Is that happening a lot or, you know, once a month?
No, it's not happening a lot. We've done it three times in the last year. And the scalpel staff at Acuna have been very cooperative, as well as Nick from the city. And, you know, we're going to continue working together, hopefully having classes and more training with them this fall. So it's been good. We've had a great relationship.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Minnie.
You're welcome.
Arbor master.
I've submitted a written report, but would be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
I reviewed the engineer's report today again.
Okay.
And looked at the pictures again, and I'm just wondering, did you already make a priority list and start working on some of those?
It's still kind of a work in, work in progress, but I do have most of it going. You know, like some of the high priority stuff. Some of the stuff that is high priority, they didn't really find, like the water system in, in South Cove that keeps failing. And so, but yeah, we do, we, you know, like the zinc's out at False Island, that's a huge priority to get taken care of, and several other things.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm sure you probably already took care of those ones that were trip hazards and some of those places where the docks are coming apart kind of spooked me out at the end because we get a big southwestern, and we could end up really trashing the end of that dock or something, but I know you're on it, so just.
Anything else? Thank you. Librarian.
Mr. Mayor, I submitted a written report. I would like to add, I am quite interested in what is going to be decided by the council of anything tonight as far as upping COVID protocols again. I do have an in-person craft event scheduled for Monday, so that will, whether I go ahead with that or not, will depend on if anything changes, so I'm tuned in for that. I also wanted to add, there are a couple of grants available through the state library. They receive specific American Rescue Plan Act funds. One of them is a non-competitive grant. Basically, if you, if you're eligible and you fill out the application, you get up to $3,500 for COVID-related expenses, and then another $2,500 for supplies, which will be nice. And then there's a competitive one, I believe it's for up to $40,000. And I am pulling together some ideas on that, but I'm looking into possibly buying some updated furniture for like our common, the computer use area and the seating area that will enable us to have more people in the building while still being safe and distanced in case, you know, COVID just lingers for a long, long time. But then once hopefully COVID is gone and, you know, a thing of the past, it will still be really nice practical furniture just to have in the library for as long as we need it. So those are the things that I'm working on right now.
Okay. Sounds busy. Hopefully, the COVID don't put a king in the plans.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll adapt if it does, if we, if I end up not being able to do the in-person craft on Monday, I think I can make it into a take-home kit pretty quickly. But I would, I would prefer to be able to have the kids in the building, so we'll just, we will, we will see what works out.
Okay. Any more questions, Victoria?
I have a comment. Are you there?
Yes.
This is Julie. We want to wish Aurora a happy birthday.
I will let her know, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to police chief, RJ.
Yeah, I submitted a report. The after-after any questions, just to add between the bear calls and drug cases and all the fishermen, we've been staying pretty busy.
Yeah. Only three of you, I can see why.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for RJ?
Just if he has any leads on a fourth, has there been any developments for a fourth
I don't want to jinx myself, because the last time I had two excellent people I was going to hire, and there's thousands of them, I couldn't change their minds, decided they didn't want to move to TOW. But I do have somebody in line, and we're going to do it onboard next week, and we'll, hopefully, we'll see how that goes.
Okay. Are we doing CDLs for Catch a Can also, or?
Probably have people coming from Petersburg, Pitts, Kipscan. Not just CDL, but Class D. Kipscan has one part-time DMV agent. They're not doing road testing, they're not doing CDL process in periods, and so we've been, we're booked out probably two and a half, three months on road testing. And I know people scheduled for Petersburg, Pitts, Kipscan. A lot of people are coming over from Kipscan over here doing that drop-off services because it's quicker for them, and then to try to get in the point with their DMV office over at Kipscan. But yeah, I mean, sure, Sherry and Laura could comment, I mean, I have plenty that gets positive twice weekly. I mean, it's pretty, the numbers are way up from the other year by far.
Wow. Is it overwhelming your people, or are they open?
Uh, we're, we're almost at that point, but I gave one DMV agent this entire week off, next week, the other DMV agent gets the entire week off. What did he look, if I can hire another dispatcher, things will kind of smooth out, even out. We have implemented a policy with the drop-off service, you can still drop off, might be two Fridays, like normal. It's just that if you drop off on a Wednesday, you're not going to get it Friday like you used to get it. You don't have to wait till the following Tuesday in order to get it, just because the mask works are so big. And I'd say about 98% of the people on the island have absolutely no issues with it. We have the small percentage that definitely yell, scream, and kick about it, but it's part of life.
Yeah.
Yeah. Take a number, please. All right, thanks, everyone.
All right.
Thank you. Quadding works.
Russell's excused tonight.
Okay, we'll move on to recreation.
I'm here.
I see that.
Okay, well, I have submitted a report. I would like to thank the parents. I went to Catch a Can tomorrow and thought my grace adjusted, so I could now touch my nose. And I appreciate Hans and the other parents that kind of took over the four, five, and six-year-olds for me on Monday. It was great. We're playing outside, and I just have to say, I love soccer. And any questions? We did decide also to not have a salmon social with all the COVID in the, in the community at this time. But buy a salmon, a salmon ticket because there's, like, non-residents can't keep salmon, so people, local people have a better chance of winning the $10,000.
Millie might win this time.
Would be nice.
All right, did you have anything else, Victoria?
Nope, not at this time, thank you.
All right, thanks. Parks and public facilities.
I did not meet the deadline for submitting a written report. I apologize, we're busy and understaffed right now, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're just busy with the new budget year, getting some equipment going to tackle some of the projects we set forth for this year, and grass cutting is the main thing, and keeping everything going. So if there are questions that you have to answer.
Well, the 4th of July, it looked really, really good over there, so.
Thank you. We took extra, we worked a little extra harder on this year, so I'm glad that it was noticeable. Thank you.
You're duly noted. I've had several comments on it, so, thank you. Any questions for Terry? Or Doug? Well, Terry runs the show, we know that. All right, Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to reading the correspondence.
I had one question on the correspondence. So the senior services, we got a request letter, and then we got like a thank you letter. So does that mean we gave them what they were asking for?
Well, it's budgeted, but we haven't released it yet. So I think the thank you letter, that was included their quarterly, or actually, won't have it.
The senior quarterly, the one that's dated July 29th says, we want to thank the city of Craig for generous support. And then it gives a, you know, how many seniors they serviced and all that stuff.
Right, so this is about the time of year, since it's a new fiscal year, that we send the budgeted amount of $7,000 off to them, they always send a letter asking for it.
Okay.
They also, I think it also overlapped with the regular reporting to us for the last reporting period.
Okay, so we can pretty much disregard the first letter then, in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll ask Sherry to arrange for, take the next time we do checks, to make our budget contribution.
Okay. Because the other one was dated March, so I'm guessing that since that March letter, they probably, I don't know. I was kind of disregarding the March request because I was assuming by the July letter that they got it.
Oh, I see, okay, so the March one is included in the report, that came actually recently. And the more recent one was the request, so it's formality, I include it in there just as an information.
Okay, but we're, they're not, they're not, we're not ignoring anything that they asked for then. We're continuing our normal contribution.
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, that's all I had.
I have a question on the public notice of the decision. Is this actually a second row sale? Yeah, that's what it says.
Okay. I just, reading through it, it's like, it's a lot of capital being taken in this letter. There are some apps that came with it that I could forward on if you're interested in looking at them.
I'll stop by. There, it shows that it's second row underlined.
Well, they showed the units.
Okay.
The polygon units on a kind of large-scale map. If they identify a second row. Then it's all St. Yacke. Kind of the winter, the winter harbor shoreline.
Oh, it's clear down there. It's a knock and sail, but it's the second row down by.
It's north of, it's north of, it's north of Winter Harbor, between Mare and, say, Sarkar.
Well, St. Yacke, maybe.
Actually, St. Yacke would be a better description, yeah.
Okay. It's also second row up there.
Yeah, that money fund's been over 16 million now for a couple weeks.
That's what I was just going to ask.
I figured it popped over.
16.14 million, I think, when I checked the other day.
Before the bubble breaks, it was. Imagine the interest along with that again. Nothing changed. Okay, we'll move on, consideration of resolutions and ordinances. Resolution 21-16, HRA agreement.
Move to, move to adopt resolution 21-16.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 21-16, HRA agreement. Open for discussion. Open for discussion.
Just to re-up the norm.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we need to vote on this? Do you want to do a roll call or?
It's a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, man.
Billy Scoover?
Yes.
Michael Cepic?
Yes.
JD McDonald?
Yes.
Mel McKinley?
Yes.
James C.?
Yes.
Hope she cares.
Yeah, moving on to ordinance number 730, authorizing sale of city property to APNT.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt, um, ordinance number 730, authorizing the sale of city property to APNT.
I have a couple of thoughts on it. I, you know, I'm thinking about, sometimes we decide we want to sell land, sometimes we don't. I, it kind of come to me that, I see things from, this is utility. You know, it's long-term, it's community benefit. It's highly unlikely that, you know, this something's going to change all of this land if it became, uh, you know, becomes private, that it would then end up going into, going to somebody else or anything like that. So, I'm comfortable with these kinds of land, uh, dispersments or sales. Uh, that being said, the one thing I would, you know, suggest we might consider is, is just having a caveat there, in there that if, you know, 50 years from now something changes, the city has a first right of refusal on, we, we, we purchasing it.
Yeah, I believe that'd be a very good idea if we do, proceed with this sale to retain that first right of refusal.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And I agree with the fact that it is a public utility and it serves a purpose that will benefit the city. I would like to see it keep the utility rates down, but I don't see that happening, so.
I don't know if you can write that into the city.
Maybe they wrote a lot of stuff in there when they wanted to buy it, so.
You think you could sneak that in there, John?
Yeah, certainly. Write the first refusal as part of the, of the terms of sale.
No, I mean the rates.
Might be electric.
Okay.
The rates might be electric.
We, we believe in you, Brian.
And the first gets involved. Ask a regulatory commission and, I don't like any of their rules, so.
All right, we'll stick with first right of refusal.
I would ask that the council, in this consideration and some discussion at last meeting about land sales, and the council kind of settled on discussing whether or not to assign premium value to each sale at this point in the sale, second reading of the ordinance prior to a appraisal being done. So, I'd ask if the council is interested in adding a premium percentage or value to the sale of the property, that this would be the appropriate time to discuss it before we move up the resolution.
Good point. Also, they have, uh, in talking when they first discussed this land purchase, APNT kind of said that they were wanting to upgrade that site to where they could produce or send more power down their lines toward Silver Bay and whatever we need in the harbor area, plus John Sees New Editions and such, so. And if Quakena gets in and develops a piece north of us and is going to require more power and they're aware of this, and they were getting ready to upgrade to where they could manage it, so.
When it comes to adding a percentage, is there, and forgive my ignorance for not knowing this, but this is not my area of expertise. Is there like a industry standard in this area? I mean, the property?
This, this is probably something relatively new.
I'm not sure what an industry standard in terms of setting a premium. I know that the mental health trusts, we lost the mental health trust and the pastor policy's been to sell for a praise value plus 10%, I think, or 15%. That's their, their internal policy, but I'm not aware of sort of industry-wide standards for that. I will say, maybe ask Brian if you remember, the last time we had this appraised, it's probably been many years.
Yeah, those commercial property values have changed in 15 years or more.
We might still be looking at a $3, $3.50 a square foot appraisal. We just don't know. First place to APNT, I think that's what it was. So, just something to keep in mind in terms of at least a range of values in the history of the slot. Square foot value hasn't been as low as, my recollection is right, it was $3 for the back lots, $4 a square foot for the front lots and $3.50 for the one that were in front to back. Is that yours as well?
I believe that's correct. And I would also just, just to say, our discussions with the assessors in the past, either as they don't assessments or praise values, one of the reasons that, um, those properties haven't changed values, a lot of it has been tied to the fact that there haven't been enough sales in order for them to generate comparables in order to trend property up and down. So, the, the, and the stability and the value of those lots is not necessarily tied to the current value versus past value. It's more tied to a matter of process that the assessors or what they're appraising the properties. They don't have enough data during assessment time and they don't change property values.
See, that's the whole problem with this. Because if my little tiny lot is worth $65,000, we cannot give APNT that lot, I'd rather buy and put a house on it. You know? If you're going to give, give the lot away for $30,000, I'll go to the funding commission and buy a lot, put a house on it, make a profit on it. It's like, uh, we, that's why we have to do something with, especially with the commercial property. It's worth way, how many square feet is that one? I mean, it's not going to work.
It's 22,000.
Right, well, if it's 22,000 at $3, that's 66,000. I mean, my lot's only 7,200 and it's worth 65,000, so. And I know it's a view lot, so that helps a little bit. But still, they're making money off of that lot. And it has to be appraised at something so that we can get some reasonable tax money out of them too. That's my thought.
Yeah, like.
So, I agree with that. I mean, we haven't had the resales and so you don't see a, what's a true reflection appraisal out there. So, I think what we decided when we were, you know, talking about this at our last meeting is that we didn't change anything in our policy. So, that gives us the flexibility of just determining whether we want to establish a, like a pre-sale percentage above appraisal or we can have the appraisal done and then make a determination. My kind of feeling is, is we could, we, we should have the appraisal done, see where it comes out. And then we can look at other communities that might have a little bit more activity to help us determine what is a true reflected value of that kind of property. For that, for a utility that you have that kind of property of SITCA, KESCAN, Petersburg.
Right.
You know, doing a wrangle, I mean, so my thought would be, do the appraisal, understand the value and then do some, some cost comparison with other communities. Because that's the only way we're going to get somewhere close to a realistic value determination, in my opinion.
I agree.
When the, our assessor comes down, do they need to assess the homes? Or is there, does that be at least assessed out there?
They assess, uh, they assess all properties. We don't assess all properties every year. So, there are certain triggers to assess the property. And I, I don't recall offhand when these properties have been assessed this recent year out there. 2014 for sure, because we reassess all properties. But normally they only reassess about 80 or 90 properties based on certain triggers. And it's unlikely for most of these pro, for this property in particular that it's been under those triggers in a long time. So, their assessment, that, that, that this lot would likely not have had an individual revaluation since 2014.
And that's why, like Mike was saying, it's hard to say what appraisal plus what percentage because what if it appraises at 200,000 and won't? But you know what I mean? We don't want to add 10% to that, but at the same time, if it appraises at?
Why not? It's a company.
Well, if it appraises at 10,000 and we only add 10%. Do you know, like, it's hard to know pre, and I know they're paying for the appraisal, so that makes it hard, but how do you know?
Well, that's.
We have to pay this way.
And the next question, part of the discussion the last couple of times that we talked about Title 16 is on whether or not the city should pay for appraisals when there's little, um, when there's, um, when the applicant goes into it completely blind, there's the question of is it fair for the applicant to have them pay for the appraisal upfront? And it'd really be a blank slate for what the council is going to charge based on that appraisal. Uh, the solution for that is for the city to pay for the appraisal upfront. And then if the sale finally goes through, it's added to the value of the sale, which is probably the better way to do it if, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a big uncertainty for the applicant.
That makes sense.
But you would be if you wait until after the appraisal comes back to decide what to charge based on the appraisal. You're leaving all of the uncertainty. And so, it, it, it really meant is a great deal of uncertainty for the applicant to pay for that appraisal upfront, really not knowing how the city's going to use that appraisal to set value in the end. And so, if the council wants to proceed with waiting until the appraisal's back, our recommendation would be that the city pays for the appraisal upfront. And the biggest drawback to that is that if Byron then does not go through the sale and we have paid for appraisal, that really doesn't do anyone any good. Appraisal for a commercial property is likely to be in somewhere between $2,500 and $5,000.
Wasn't the appraisal person just here not too long ago?
They were, and it's not uncommon. And I, I think that, um, APNT had the appraisers visit the property and take photos. And we do that often with the appraiser as well. It's not uncommon for them to do the field work while they're here doing something else. But they don't start any work that they're going to charge anyone for until somebody gives them the go-ahead. So, they may sit on those photos and then visit and never do anything with it and not charge APNT or the city until somebody asks them to do it for an appraisal.
Is there a way for the city to put like properties on the list of the appraiser when he comes? Like, as like, these are certain ones? Because I feel that they've been trying to buy this before the appraisal, the appraiser came down.
In, very often, we have properties that we want to sell. We make the list for the appraisers to come down. And we don't, generally, we only do that with properties that there's a, some sort of pending sale or planned sale for. Otherwise, we, if, if it's properties that don't have a sale pending on them, then, uh, it really doesn't do us or the appraisers any good. Because they still have to visit the site within a reasonable amount of time in order to be confident in the condition of the property.
Right. Hasn't APNT asked to purchase this land before?
They did. In fact, this, uh, was originally, the second reading of this ordinance was originally on the agenda in November. And the council asked for it to be postponed until the council had an opportunity to have that Title 16 discussion.
Right.
Which we had last month. And so, this has been on, uh, the radar for, um, well, second reading was in November, uh, probably since September, October of last year.
Right, but never before, like years past?
This is the first time that I recall that APNT has requested a purchase of this parcel.
And its closing cost, is that on the city or?
Uh, no, but generally all of that gets added, although for sales that the city does, our municipal code requires that we should land sales by quick clean deed. So, there's been warranty insurance, or particularly title, uh, title search is done. So, the closing cost, since I do all of the work in-house except the recording, is generally just the recording fees, but we add that $20 to the cost of the property repairs.
So, you don't charge for your time?
Yeah.
Oh, I feel like that should be included.
There is a $100 application fee. It's kind of a nominal fee that covers some costs, but there's no. And in point of fact, it doesn't really take that much time. At least for a particular lot like this, it's got a good legal description. Uh, we have a format for quick clean deed already that we can do some editing to make a new one. It might take an hour if it's more complicated than you think it is.
Yeah, that's, most, most of the stuff is that, is that, the template's for. So, sales agreement is just a matter of editing an existing document. The same thing with, with NDA. There's a couple of hours of administrative work when you want to sign sales. And we made it down to some of those.
And having an appraisal in hand, even if you, someone needed to pay for it. And if there's no sales transaction, it can be the basis for a lease escalation, which is already included in the terms of the lease. Periodically, you can adjust the rates based on market value, so. The appraisal would give us enough basis for doing that when the time comes.
Can we consult the local realtor on that value of that property as well as the appraisal?
We can consult a local realtor. Our municipal code requires us to sell for at least market.
Based on an NAI certified appraiser. There's a local realtor without any qualifications that are currently in the area.
If we were to take it, advisory in nature from a local realtor as well as the appraisal from the certified appraiser.
If the realtor's advice was a number higher than the appraisal, no problem. Yeah. That would be fine.
That'd be something we consider. Bring in the realtor and see what the value, land value is in their eye, what their estimate is, and then see what the appraiser said.
If the appraiser would set the minimum on that.
Yeah, pretty much. Realtor sets the ballpark figure, what they think it's worth, or what they think they can sell for.
So, pretty much for this lot, we should do the appraisal ourselves. And they don't want to buy it. And we just eat whatever it is for the time being.
If, if the council wants to wait until after the appraisal comes back in order to discuss the relative sale value to the appraisal, then my recommendation would be that the city pays for the appraisal upfront. If the council is prepared to set some premium value prior to the appraisal being done, then you should be comfortable having the applicant pay for the appraisal upfront.
That's fair on its face. This would be, that's fair on its face, but mine is just correct.
Right, yeah.
So, to answer your question again, since the council is, sounds most interested in setting the value after the appraisal is done, then, um, then it will be most fair to have the city pay for the appraisal upfront.
But we can still pass the second reading still based on this other stuff, John? Should we go ahead and push out the appraisal? So, if the council wants to consider this beyond tonight, it should adopt the ordinance and give us some direction on, uh, on whether or not you're going to set a premium now or you're going to, or you're going to do it later. If you want to set that premium amount later, then we'll take that as evidence you want us to pay for the appraisal.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. Paying pretty, pretty, we might have something else we want to praise or might get a better deal on it because there's going to be other things to praise. Maybe a deal on, if he has to come down, he might be able to split some costs.
In the past, they've been able to praise just based on the photographs because they're so familiar with their, their market.
And, and since the APNT already indicated to them that they might be interested in an appraisal, I think they already had the appraisers, uh, visit the property when they were here last. So, they've done, likely done all of the field work that they need to do.
Okay.
Always.
One for the little bit, the $2,500, isn't it? That's my opinion anyway. Go for question?
Yep.
Hey. What's the question?
He's had to call for the question.
What's the question? Hey, is this roll call correct?
Yes, sir. Melly Scoover?
Yes.
Julian McDonald?
Yes.
Jim C?
Yes.
Chanel McKinley?
Yes.
Michael Camden?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Motion carries. At this time, I ask the council to move to appropriate funds to pay for the appraisal.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pay for the appraisal on this.
Well, maybe as a prerequisite. I mean, if the council's not ready to set a premium now, it should direct, it should move to a free
The funds for the appraisal, right?
Sorry.
The way we're looking at it, I believe.
Yeah.
So it's been made and seconded to pay for the, pay for the appraisal. Any questions on that?
There's been no motion yet.
Oh, I have the right.
I kind of said so moved to what you said, but.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Well, you seconded it. Melly seconded.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I'm not used to
That's okay.
Brian distracted you, we saw. Sorry.
The city of voice lines, Mr. Mayor.
It can be?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Approves? Very non-opposition, most fast, basically it's a phrase. Any unfinished business? No? Okay, new business, COVID-19 response and protocol.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll start with just a recap of where we are as of today, or at least where we are as of four o'clock today. Cases this last week have been literally coming in while public health has been on the phone, we have to change the numbers. As of today, there are forty-six active COVID-19 cases on Prince Wales, Prince Wales, and that includes fourteen active cases here in Gray. There are predominantly, although not entirely, resident cases. There are a couple of non-residents. And there are a lot of contacts. And public health is way behind completing case investigations and doing contacts for a number of factors, short staffing, incooperative cases, and large numbers of close contacts. There were nine new cases diagnosed today and eight new cases yesterday. So the reason for the item in the, in the packet was there are a couple of things, given the recent uptick in cases, that I would like it to us to return to or to put in place. Primarily, most of these are in order to follow the CDC guidance and to answer some specific questions by staff. So the memo kind of talks about the current, the current restrictions, and it talks about the Delta variant, which is the predominant variant in the country, and Alaska right now, most of the cases that we're likely seeing are as a result of this Delta variant. And at the bottom of the second page, I've got six actions that I'm proposing that we move to. The first answers a question from recreation about whether or not we're ready to start renting out the bounce house. And my recommendation at this point is to continue not renting out the bounce house. The CDC guidance up until recently was that unvaccinated persons didn't have to wear masks based on recent data that the CDC has that shows that while the COVID vaccines are extremely effective in knocking down symptoms and reducing hospitalizations in vaccinated folks, it is not as effective as they had hoped in terms of vaccinated folks not spreading COVID-19 to other people. So the second recommendation is to go back to requiring masks for all persons entering social facilities when social distances can be met. And that would be all facilities for all activities. Number three, including requiring masks for persons participating in activities at City Gym. Recommendation four is, again, this is a change, the current policy for vaccinated persons who are close contacts is that they don't have to do anything different unless they're showing symptoms. The current CDC guidance says that fully vaccinated persons who are identified as close contacts should wear masks when in contact with members outside of their household and should test three to five days after exposure to the positive case and continue to wear the mask until either the test result comes back or fourteen days have passed. So the recommendation is that we adopt that policy for city staff. The fifth recommendation, which I think we've already finished in most of the offices, is to put all of the plexiglass barriers back in place at customer service facing windows. And recommendation number six, which we've already done with our staff, is providing department heads and supervisors especially to monitor and remind their employees to self-monitor for symptoms of COVID. And if they're showing symptoms, to contact their primary care provider and get tested before coming back to work. So right now, those are the six recommendations that I feel are important to put in place, given where we're at with the COVID-19 cases. And certainly open to any expression or suggestions from the council.
Just a question. And number three, where you're saying require masks for all persons participating in activities at the City Gym, if, like, the karate group, if they want to practice outside again, as they did sometimes, then they can, they can do so without a mask, because that could
All of the mask requirements are primarily for indoors.
Indoors, right, sounds good.
I'm hoping we'll be able to relax, relax some of these standards, but given the number of large social events around the island over the past weekend, visiting fishermen, outside tourists, discussion with public health today, we expect the high case counts to continue probably for the next couple of weeks, haven't we?
This is just me personally. I'm fine with four, five, and six. I can be talked into one, but not two and three. And that's just where I'm at.
Are you comfortable with all of the one?
I'm on the fence on one, but two and three, I'm not.
These are for our prior list of things we had going on.
I'm sorry.
This list of one, one through six, these are things that we had going on prior to
We did prior to the CDC's changing guidance of vaccines, and they changed the requirements that most of the masking requirements only apply to unvaccinated persons. The most recent CDC guidance is to apply those masking requirements to everyone. And that's what these recommendations follow.
CDC is thinking that people that are vaccinated actually can carry virus and spread it, even though it doesn't affect them. That's what they're saying.
I've been researching the front of it.
I know, I've been listening to it too. And what do you think?
That's what I, that's, that's my feeling. I just think we need to look at this, and this is how I'm putting the school too. I mean, we got to look at it with a bigger lens than just COVID. I mean, we started sixteen months ago with one month of slow the spread, which I was fully on board with. But, I mean, I've, I've watched people at the gym. I'm at that gym all the time, and I'm watching elders and pregnant women struggling to breathe while they're doing exercise. So then they end up not coming, or they end up having, like, there's more to, there's more in life than COVID. You want to put up plexiglass, you know, monitor yourself. I mean, let's not, you know, be stupid here. Not that I'm calling everybody stupid, but you know, let's, it's here, we need precautions, but we also need to think about life outside of COVID. Because clearly, you know, if, you know, first it was get the testing and slow the spread, and then it was get treatments, then it was get vaccinated, then it was get a certain segment vaccinated, and now we're questioning if the vaccination's enough. Like, it doesn't seem like this is going away anytime soon. And there's a lot of larger ramifications. Again, I'm speaking more from the school side of things, because I've got some concerns with my son. So you know, you need to think about some of the larger, you know. Again, going back to the school, you know, the kids can make suicide. This is, this is dragging on, so we need to look at COVID, I feel like, with a bigger lens than just COVID. You know, what's the risk of slapping these masks on people when they're exercising? When they can't get full oxygen? What are they breathing in? They're getting moist, you know, are we causing more harm? I don't know. That, I, I'm, I'm one out of a plethora, so that, that's where I am at.
Yeah, I agree with the masks not working for people exercising and things like that. It's yeah, they're supposed to be there too.
Correct. The big thing is, is the masks basically are useless unless you're going to wear N95. Because the particles are so small that they blow right through that mask. I mean, admittedly, if you have it, you cough, it's going to stop a lot of it if you were the person who has it. But it's not going to protect you from it.
I mean, I, I, I go to karate. I'm vaccinated. I don't wear a mask. I slap a mask on my two kids. Brand-new mask out of the bag. By the time we leave karate, one hour, my daughter's mask, I mean, I just take it off and do this to the tra, I mean, it's just drenched. I'm like, what, what is this? What, why am I slapping this on my child's face and making her exercise through this moist thing? I, I just, I, I'm, I'm just starting to not be so on board.
And if you looked at the statistics, how did we have no one die from the flu this year?
I know. There's a lot of questions, so that's just where I'm at.
It's gone nuts. It's, it's people's choice at this point.
And that's why, exactly, you can get vaccinated. It, it clear, the vaccines do help protect the people that get vaccinated. They can still get it, but it's usually milder. That's why, number one, I'm looking at it, and I'm like, yeah, some kid might be disappointed because they can't have a bounce house for their birthday, but yeah, bounce house is a bunch of kids in a thing, and they're spitting. That, that's why on that one, I'm kind of like, okay. Not really going to hurt anybody. Some kids might be disappointed, which sucks, you know, because kids have had a lot of disappointment. The kids have carried a bigger burden than I think they should have had to. So that's why on one, I'm kind of like, I feel bad for that child that was looking forward. There's not a lot, there's not a lot around here to do for birthday parties. I get creative with princess dress up and stuff, but there's not a lot to do around it for birthdays. So it does kind of stink for some child that has a birthday party, and now they can't, you know, bounce houses are a big draw for birthday parties around here. So it stinks, but they could do the pool and whatever. That's why I, one, I'm on the fence, because there's not really, other than disappointing a child, yet again, that's really the only harm. But the two and three, I'm just not a fan of. But like I said, I'm, I'm only one, so you disagree and overrule me, that's totally fine. We're all going to disagree on COVID, so might as well accept that.
How do you get Kevin the princess dress?
What's that? Oh, Kevin took the older boys out, yeah, yeah. I did dress up like the fairy godmother with gray hair and everything. It was fun.
So you wish to exclude those two things?
Just me, but I'm interested to hear what everybody else would like to say.
I mean, I'm just, it's, I feel like this whole thing just has ramifications on everything where there's, we're canceling social events, so people aren't spending money on social events, so they don't see the need to go to work, and then businesses everywhere have help wanted signs, because nobody feels like working, because there's nothing to do to spend money on. And so everyone stays inside and stays safe, but yet our city is losing money, our businesses are depleting because of it. It's it really sucks. And then everyone that is working is being run ragged because of the long extra hours they have to put in. So just adding this whole, we have an influx, so we have to go back to all these things, just is, I feel like it's more defeating to people than a joyous event where, like, the seafood festival got canceled, and all these people that put time in to create things, to sell there, to put time away from work. And then now the salmon derby is being canceled, but yet we're still doing a raffle to give away ten thousand dollars? Just let's just keep giving away money and putting restrictions on the people that are trying to be normalized. So I don't know where to go with it. I don't, I want people to be able to stay safe and feel that we are trying to protect people as well, but also there's
It is.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I feel that the COVID has been around long enough that, like, tonight, I'm wearing a mask. I have been vaccinated. That is my choice. So we're to the point where individuals can make their own choices as to what they want to do. But Julia, I didn't think of it in that light, but I'm having a hard time thinking what, my, my tenant was killed in a wagon accident today, so my, my mind is with Penny, so I'm having
I'm so sorry.
a hard time with this. But I feel, like I said, it's been around long enough that we, we know where we're comfortable and where we're not comfortable as far as being in public. I still wear my mask when I, when I'm in public. And that's not only for my safety, but if I happen to be a carrier, then I want to protect the other people too, so. But I agree with your statement. Thank you.
The one thing I'll say about number two. If John chooses to protect the employees in City Hall and wants the public to come in and pay bills wearing masks, I don't have a problem with that at all. If you think it's necessary to protect our employees or or Holmes does for the people coming up to pay the bills from the show, that's fine. But the other parts I'm on board with are, are not doing much. We haven't been renting the bouncy house or whatever it is anyway, so it's like, we continue to not do that till this hopefully this patch goes away, but I'm sure I already know that there were people at the big events this weekend that are positive, and then made it back off the island, so it's definitely going to it's going to be a problem, but everybody wore masks at the one I went to. So that tells you how good that worked.
So for this, for the staff to get useful direction here, I need the council to settle on which of these recommendations you want to stand, which ones you don't. And or to add your own, if there's something that you didn't think are missing. And it's, it's instructive to hear the comments, and it'll help council members, but we do need some kind of a direction. Preferably a form of a motion to implement whatever it is or more you would like us to implement here.
Well, I would like to see, there, there may be some people that don't realize the numbers that are happening. So us, an extra sign on the City Gym, if we're going to allow people to go in without a mask, stating, you know, COVID numbers are up, use it at your own risk, mask or don't COVID numbers are up, use at your own risk, mask or don't have. It's, it's time for people to learn on themselves, for parents to decide for their kids.
Yeah.
So the council wants to strike three and four from these lists?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good with four. It's two and three.
What if instead of two, we have all persons entering city facilities have to wear masks, right? What if we leave it up to the department heads of each city building? If they would want to require masks or not? They are the ones working in the environment, they know what would be, what is most effective in their area.
Well, by requiring that, you are taking precautions to protect the city employees. If you're wearing a mask when people come into city offices, but.
Right, those are just the offices though. We're talking about silly city facilities, which include a lot of places, not just the offices. There's the pool, the school, the, you know. Better suggestion.
So does council want to do away with two and three?
I'm not comfortable with doing away with two because there's a high percentage of out of town people that we don't know and running around and this, you know, as Jim said, and we all know, there's, there's a lot of interaction going on. And so there is a, you know, it's probably gonna go up. Exposure rates are, you know, we don't know where exposure is gonna come from, so I, I don't feel uncomfortable with number two. Number three, I can see, you know, if we wanna somehow word that to encourage personal responsibility regarding masks and one practical or something like that, I'd be more comfortable with that. But number two, if we, if we go to each department making that decision, you're gonna have differences and variances. And then that puts, that's gonna put all the city, you know, management and kind of conflicting, could put them in conflicting positions. I, I personally would rather see a uniform policy on that.
But if you approve two, that means when the staff is in this building, you'd all be wearing masks all day. Many over at the EMS building, everybody that goes in the library.
My staff, yeah. Unfortunately, I'm, I mean, I'm gonna speak up here about my staff and you've been in the pool lately, wearing masks all day. The pool is not a safe idea.
But the recommendations don't call for that.
It says require masks for all persons entering city facilities.
When social distancing cannot be maintained. Six feet for most activities to treat for the walk or the exercise.
Well, like at the pool, I mean, there's, people walk up to the lifeguard and stuff all the time. And then they're in that little, sometimes there's two of them in that little front area.
Or then only one person would be able to use the gym.
Well, then you have five people in the gym and we've already gone back to that since all these went up, just to be on the safe side. But I don't require them to wear a mask in the gym because that is not safe. I did a lot of research through this. Um, I did work with the wrestlers when they were wrestling.
You're talking about the fitness room, the pool, not the safe gym.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, the fitness room is cool, yeah. But I still allow five in there because footage wise, we can safely have six, five people in there making social distance. But no more than that. And so since the numbers went up, I brought that back in. I won't have them wear masks in there though. I mean, if you guys say so, I will, but I would, we'll just have to close the gym if we do that, honestly. Because people won't wear masks in there. It's not safe.
You have a question on it?
Um, I just had a question about the, um, the, the social distancing would, would Plexiglas qualify? I would hope that the Plexiglas would qualify as social distancing for someone paying a bill at the harbor office. I'm just curious, I guess a question for discussion.
I think if you do that and then like they did originally, you know, open another little desk in front so that they're not smashed together at the Plexiglas would be more insufficient. And the karate, with the number of people you have there, like in the gym, are you able to maintain the six footer, the seven footer?
Uh, when we're doing our warmups and our extra, it's a, it's a small group. I mean, it, it's bigger than it's been in the past, but it's Craig, Alaska. We're talking about 10 versus four, you know, like, um, during all of that, yes. But then there are times that you work with a partner. Now, most of the times my partner is Kevin, who I actually am around quite a bit without a mask. Um, yeah, you know, I, I just feel like we need to turn it over to people at this point. We have a vaccine, you can get it, you cannot get it. We have masks that are abundantly available. Wear it, don't wear, I just, I, I, I just, I don't know. So yes, there are moments, some days that we work with a partner, not every time, but there are times. We, we aren't sparring right now because of COVID.
So you're pretty, you're pretty close to, in theory, you're pretty close to covering the, uh, guidelines of two anyways.
When two?
Number two. Well, you're, the way you're operating right now, you're pretty close to covering the requirements of two.
Yeah, but like, let's say Sensei walks around and corrects people. Does he need to then stop and get a mask because he might walk by somebody and be closer than three feet as he walks by? Or six feet or whatever, however many feet it is this week? I don't know. I know they're very diligent at karate, but if you pass a rule, they're gonna follow it to the letter, so. And it's not just, I mean, I was hoping this fall that we'd be able to do gymnastics. I mean, it's been a year and a half. Every time I run into parents, I can't do gymnastics? I don't know, I just, I'm exasperated with the whole thing. And I know, and I'm not trying to make light of it, I just.
What I'm wondering about is, you know, is, I thought, is there a way, if we just eliminated three and kept two, and two, and two, two would cover the majority of three anyways. If you, as long as you abide by the, uh, social distancing requirements, the only caveat would be like you're saying, when Sensei comes around for instruction, I don't know, how would you, how could you, uh, that's a pretty small, I mean, that didn't happen. Most activities in there would meet the requirements probably of two.
Well, I mean, you've got other activities, you've got volleyball. And, um, I don't know what else is going on in the gym at this point, I can't think, but.
Skating.
Skating. Kids might go by each other, be closer than six feet for a couple of seconds, so.
It's like I said, random measures are inconvenient. There's just no arguing that point, it's true.
It's not just a matter of inconvenience, so they go, it, there, there are bigger ramifications of being inconvenient.
Count on two, Penny points out required, but what he had mentioned is they highly recommended. So two, not gives people their choice.
I would, I would like to see us move toward, more towards personal choice. I know when I'm in the pharmacy, I'm vaccinated, I'm taking extra precautions, our staff are taking extra precautions, but I do not wear a mask. But if I see somebody and I'm gonna go do counseling and they're wearing a mask, I don't, you know, some, sometimes I don't know the person. Maybe they're going through chemotherapy, maybe they're high risk and they're can, I immediately put on a mask and go around and talk to them with the mask on. If I've gotta go up to them and they're wearing a mask, you know, I just kind of feel like we need to turn it over to personal responsibility. But I understand there's a public health risk, but you know. I don't know. It's just, it's not gonna be for th- this week or next week. It's gonna, you know, there's gonna be, we, I mean, it's, every time we turn around, there's another variant, another this, another, well, that, it, it's, I just don't, it's not, it's going to drag on and it is doing things to people's mental health. You know, people need to exercise, to be physically healthy. People need social interaction. People need to see people's smiles. People need this.
I would encourage at least one of you to make a motion, just looking at the options you think we ought to implement. And then see if there's support for that, try to reach a resolution here.
Well, you know what my motion is gonna be to somebody else.
Who states his motion?
No, I would move to approve. I'm gonna do one, but I'm really hoping it'll be temporary. Uh, one, four, five and six.
One, four, five and six?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second on that vote?
Second.
Which has been made and seconded to remove two and three from our list of six. See for the discussion on that or? Enough? Can we do a roll call vote on that, John?
Are you ready to vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jim C?
Yes.
Chanel McKinnon?
Yes.
Julie McDonald?
Yes.
Michael Campich?
No.
Millie Scoonover?
Yep.
Four votes, the affirmative motion carries.
Thank you, council. Moving on to discussion of the use of ARPA funds.
Mr. Mayor, we talked about this a little bit in past council meetings, the memorandum, it's in the packet. Again, tries to summarize what the city might expect in terms of funding from ARPA. The four, I'm A through D on page one, describing broad terms, what the funding can be spent on. I think we can expect $600,000 more or less. The, the, how the money will come to us keeps changing. I found out today, I got an email that in spite of being told that we would receive $300,000 in the near term, it's apparent that we're gonna receive $150,000 here any day now. And the second, $150,000 coming about 12 months from section 602 of the act. Section 603 money, uh, which is about the same amount, $150,000 per day, uh, will come sometime pretty now in the end of the year, I think. Uh, so we'll get four payments ultimately and add about $600,000. Question is, what is the city gonna do with the money? I described some of the things that are eligible for withdrawal or use of the funding rather. Some of them are familiar to the council based on action the council took last year to the CARES money. Although I will say that a number of the programs the city offered, rental assistance, uh, utility assistance, um, food, uh, food assistance. Those things are offered directly through the state now, more so than they were under CARES. And so, um, I guess I'm more inclined to, uh, recommend to the council that, uh, that it not duplicate those state programs so much. There is a fairly broad brush ability to use the money on water and wastewater and broadband infrastructure, which has a certain appeal to us as a municipality. We can reimburse ourselves for some revenue lost last year. Brian and Cherry worked on a initial formulated calculation and I've got the number, I think it's around $140,000. That we may be eligible to draw, put in the general fund. And there's an option to provide premium pay for certain classifications of workers, including workers in the childcare industry. And I've talked about that in the memorandum, the needs of the childcare center that have been expressed to us and to me by the childcare center board over the course of the last number of months, a few months actually. So we have licensed healthcare, sorry, so we have licensed childcare facility on the island and it has a significant value to the community, including some of our own employees for daycare. So I can summarize those, compile the list of possible, um, uses. And then the recommendation section, I specifically recommended taking certain steps, uh, at least, um, on a macro level, uh, since we don't even have the money in hand yet. We haven't gotten even the first payment. We won't get the full payment for another 12 months, so. Uh, but we do have needs in the meantime, so I asked the council, they consented the staff recommendation on its intent to use the ARPA funding and now it's, uh, it's kind of a lock frame in two pages. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have about other potential uses of the funds or variations on what I've recommended. By the way, and expenditure is that the ARPA money can be, uh, retroactive to March 3rd. So what is your pleasure?
Just, I'll just reference two things that I think are reasonable, uh, that I could support is, you know, working with the childcare center, maybe some supplemental, um, revenue to help them find employees and, and keep going. And then I personally would like to pick out one of the infrastructure projects that John has suggested here with staff's maybe recommendation, which one would be most appropriate, but try to do one of the big infrastructure, projects, you know, new roof for, on the wastewater treatment plant or whatever else it might be. But it would be a good opportunity to, you know, to try and do something that we need to do anyways.
Um, Mike, what was the first one that you said?
Um, the childcare center, you know, helping with employee, because we have the option of supplemental benefits for, you know, employees. Uh, I'm not saying the other ones aren't worthy, and there were two that jump out to me that I, I think are worthy.
Well, I see, I see one, I see one could be, because our businesses are hurting, finding employees and such. Our, our businesses, employees right now are a big, I'm hearing more about employees than I am, finding employees and keeping employees than I am. You know, when the COVID first was happening and we were first doing the money, it was a lot of individuals and households, but I'm hearing a lot more from businesses and such. So, but I, I could see one and, and four almost combined where you could have one with a special focus for the Craig childcare center. I don't know if it really matters if you combine them or not. But I would agree with that. And the only other one that, do you want us to make suggestions now or would you like us to see you later?
No, I'd like some kind of a consensus now on the recommendations.
Oh, okay. Can I throw out an idea?
Of course.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a large expenditure, um, but, and I have a vested interest in this for full disclosure. But the, um, I've seen the community garden has kind of come back alive. Um, now I have 13 beds and it's been reactive over there, but there's, that garden had kind of been overrun with weeds and people had lost interest. And I'm now seeing a ton of kids from the neighborhood are coming over. Kids have plots, fishermen have plots and are putting fish heads and already prepping for next year. So we may want to look into putting a little bit of money, again, I'm not talking, but we might want to put a little bit of money into, um, a little revamping on the community garden, which would be healthy food, community activity, outdoors, COVID safe. That's just an idea for something. And, and what it specifically could use is, um, a gate on the backside and possibly, um, lights in a green, in the greenhouse and a new door. So we're not exactly talking about.
I'm one of the users up there, approaching the night belt, uh, possibly getting electricity in there to start the greenhouse a little earlier.
Yeah, not grow, not grow lights, because that gets really expensive really quick. They're talking about literally like a light bulb in there, so you can see.
A light bulb will keep it warm for a second as it goes. Increases your growing season. That's what this thought's worth. Or yeah, that would be a good, uh, use for that money part of the bill there. Yeah, that would be a good use for that money part of it, go there, improve that project. Do you have any idea about the maintenance level of the sewer plant roof and all the metal out there that's having issues?
I will say that, I want to double check with Russell, but my conversations with the roof is presents a more immediate need than wastewater pump station, which are old, decades old, but they're still functioning and the guys have figured out a way to keep them going. They won't even get this eventually, but in terms of that versus fixing the roof that's actively leaking, the roof would probably take the.
Priority.
Which roof?
The wastewater treatment.
Okay.
If you have a corrosion issue going on, it's ongoing.
That seems like a priority.
That small building, it's $300,000 to cover.
That was the roofing contractors back in the envelope estimate.
You could replace.
They would have to be bid out, of course.
Definitely.
That's, I wanted to ask, who is, is it a local contractor or the, what's the background? Don't have to say a name, but is it?
It's, he's based in Sitka. He's been up for us before.
Are the girders all bad too or something? We're not just replacing the steel roof?
I think it's primarily the steel roofing, but there may have been another component. I don't know if it was the purlins or some other fittings between the big iron and the roof, you know, roofing itself. I'd have to go relook at the estimate.
We have a local middle building contractor that puts a many, quite frequent on. And get an idea out of him and get a appraisal of that estimate.
Is it, is that, I mean, because of the screwing rules, it's a vacant Davis thing because it's that much money?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what sucks. $100,000 roof now costs you $300,000.
It's.
If we broke that into parts, would that alleviate the big Davis vacant requirements?
I'm not sure how we could just install part of the roof and come back and install the rest.
Come on, get creative. Build it on top of the other roof.
Is it still at 75 or was that wishful thinking they were going to raise it?
It's 25.
25.
That's right. They were gonna, there was something at the legislature that they were going to raise it to 75, but I think the unions all went nuts on them or something, so they all chickened out.
It changes from 10,000, you know, to 25, so it got bumped up to a minor collection.
Needs to be bumped up to a half a million or something.
So John, it looks to me like this recommendation, if it's approved as written, is just, it's not actually allocating any money? Is that correct?
Well, if the council say for this person's discussion or to adopt the recommendation, the first expense would be, immediate expense would be some kind of an agreement with the childcare center on the wages. Rest of it would probably.
Would, would that come back to us for approval?
Until we got some, we got more of the funding in.
So would the wage thing come back to us before approval or would it, so like, should we set a cap on that of some kind or?
Yeah, the council should set a cap on the wage, a wage supplement if it's inclined to approve it.
Okay, because that's, it's already August and that was their deadline. So that seems to be like a time sensitive.
It is.
Okay. So.
I think the $2 is more than sufficient. People don't want to work for $17 an hour watching kids and it doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, I'm not sure they're at 15 now, I'm starting.
I thought they were, I've seen it, average either 14 or 15 if they're advertising right now.
You offer a sign up incentive to, similar to what the first bank's offering right now. They're offering $1,000 for a sign up, but they haven't had any takers.
Sign up should, you should get money till after you've been there for six months.
We, we wrote our sign on bonus, because I did one with an employee one time because it met a need that he had. I did one and it was contingent upon so many months of employment. So let's just say it was a hundred, uh, let's say, let's say it was $120 to make it easy for my math, my head. Every month that he left earlier, that amount would come out of his final wages. So if he left after six months, $60 would come out of his final wages because he didn't make the, you know what I'm saying? Like it was $120 contingent upon 12 months of employment.
I'm sure the bank probably has some similar.
Yeah, so you can give, you could do a $1,000 one or a $2,000 one, but then if they leave after three months, if it's a six month thing, half of it would come out of their last paycheck as a repayment. And then you could offer that to the next person hired. I feel like I watched it.
I don't, no, I didn't lose it, but I don't like prepaid anybody for anything. It won't work.
In my case, it was a moving expenses and things, which if we did it the other way, I don't understand, but that's, it worked in that situation, but I agree.
It's not something you have to worry about. Your supplementing wages, your hours already worked.
Yeah.
Because if these people get their paycheck and then they just don't show up anymore, they just scam the system.
That's a true, that's a good point. My only concern with adding it to their paycheck is whatever you get, when people get paid, they get used to having. And then when it goes away, it's like, yeah, so.
So you want to authorize some appropriation by motion now, save for the childcare center and leave the rest for later? We could do that as well, it's whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, there's still a lot of, kind of a little bit of subjectiveness to all of this. I think we're all, we feel pretty comfortable in what we've discussed, but, you know, figuring out the exact amounts and how to do that is. I guess we, on the childcare thing, I'd be interested in what is their actual starting wage? And then that being able to say, okay, well, we want to bump that up $2 or $3 or whatever the case may be.
Looking at one, A to P or W or one of those things, it's on one of those.
Well, my other question is, let's say they're hiring at 14 an hour and that's what they hire at. And then you have employee X that's been there for a year and they're getting paid 15 an hour because they worked their way up. Well, now you hire somebody new, well, now they get their 14 starting plus the $2. So now employee that you just hired is now getting paid more than employee X who's been there for more than a year.
Is this money just for the new people or?
Well, my thought is if you're everybody working.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Well, I'm glad I said that because that was one of my concerns that I didn't want to say out loud, so. That makes me feel better, I get it now.
Yeah, I think giving them a benefit to filling out an application and getting hired is not what we want. More so just helping out the people that's already been working.
Sure, good.
What happens when the ARPA money is gone? Will we still be?
We're not going to.
Then we'll stop it? Then I'll have to go drop down to a lower income?
Unless the, unless the center can make a difference. They'd have at least a year to get ready for that. And the employee would have to understand that it may just be, you know, a waste, you know, actually.
Can I throw out an idea? Could we just give an allotment to the childcare center and say, this, we're giving you X amount to beef up your employment and hang on to employees and let them decide what would work best for them?
I don't think that we should be dealing with an entity there. If, if somebody else gets licensed in this town, then we're going to have to start helping them too. And if we get two other ones licensed, we're going to have to start helping them too. We got to be careful on private business, even if it's a.
Nonprofit.
A nonprofit. We already give them a building. Everybody else in the world can make it in the childcare business being lent and doing all the other things that these people don't have to do. And I know it's done a lot of good for the community, but when they've only got four or five kids over there or six kids, that's a big building that we're paying a lot of money for already for four, five, or six kids.
So to answer your question, the council, if it wants to move forward, can structure it any way it wants to? Lump sum, hourly supplement, label and increments?
I was just thinking it's their, it's their setup. They know more about it than we do, so they might know better. We might think something's a really great idea, the $2 or whatever, but they might have another idea that works better because they know their place better than we do. That was my little thought process.
If we put this off until the September meeting, we have a chance to talk to them.
I think it's an urgent need though, because they were going, they were talking about closing in August.
They notified us that they're going to shut down in August that they can't attract sufficient staff to spell the two employees they have right now.
Have you had an update from them?
I've been in touch with Allison and Angie, sorry. And they just, it's like you said, they're struggling for staff.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's because of the wages or money wise. I think it's more so because people don't want to work, no.
And there aren't a lot of kids either. That was the problem to start with. Do they think they actually have enough kids to, once we get to fall time?
Well, because they're licensed, they have ratios between staff and children that they have to supervise. Bringing on additional staff means that you could, assuming that they can't accommodate all the personnel for childcare services, they have more capacity to do that.
Yeah, when they were here before asking us for money, they couldn't even attract the kids and they had the employees.
Yes.
So I don't know whether that has improved enough. We're just bringing another bandaid on before the bleeding when it starts.
And all I can tell you is that my last conversation with the board is that the issue is attracting and retaining staff.
So if we offered, you know, if we did allow for some consideration and they can't attract staff, then we're not paying it anyways, right?
Right.
We are getting close to blowing the pin on that, but I, I personally am still interested in trying to keep them going. So I think that because they're licensed and they do some, they can cover some areas that, you know, these other kind of home, home operations either can't or aren't willing to cover. And I really hate to see them go away because the, the time is going to come and we'll have the, the needs for those special, you know, people or, you know, the ability to watch kids that have sometimes special condition or requirement. There's no doubt it will happen.
Yeah.
So what do you want to do? An allotment, a catch allotment too, or you do want to, is that what you're looking at, John?
I just need some authorization from the council to expend the funding. So you could say, staff here's X thousands of dollars, implement a wage supplement and report back to us when it's gone, when it's almost gone, or in two months or, or you could say specifically, we'll authorize X thousands of dollars for the X dollar an hour supplement for wages for employees at the childcare center. Give you as detailed or as broad brush as you'd like. In any event, however, whatever you do, assuming that something's appropriated, we'll report back and keep it posted as to how well it's doing.
What about, I'm throwing out ideas to get feedback from y'all. What about, so you, in your proposal here, it was $25,000 annually. So what if we allotted up to $6,250 and then that would give us a quarter, you know, four months? See what it shakes out to be.
I was thinking the same thing. Let's go short term, see if they can get it going and then if, if it, if they get the support and things continue on, then we can reauthorize.
So can I make a recommendation to move ahead with the offering the wage supplement assistance to CCC? I don't know if I said enough Cs, but you know what I mean? Employees up to $6,250 and then continue with the rest of all this? Can that be my motion?
Sort of, yeah. Move to appropriate $6,250 for wage supplement at the childcare center.
Yeah.
Do I have a second on that?
And that's quarterly?
Yes.
Or now, second?
Well, I understood it.
That, that would give us four months to see what does it do?
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
How about a second on that motion?
One second.
Amelia, a second, thank you, Millie. So we have that appropriation, John, for a quarter. You understand all that?
A quarter is just three months, not four.
Oh, sorry, yes, a quarter, a quarter's four, but that's three months, yes, thank you. Thankfully math isn't a big part of my job.
Thank you.
Showing things, is it?
No, no.
Any more suggestions on this or we're going to vote?
Yes, more clothes, it's all big.
Is there voice or a roll call?
Voice vote's fine.
Yeah, all in favor?
I.
opposed? Green down, there it is.
So one more question on this, on the other items, you can come back to us a little more detail, is that where we're?
Yeah, I haven't heard any objections to any of them, so we can get some of the funding in place and go through some of the train to monitor it and come back and get some kind of a critical mass of funding and see how you'd like to proceed with it.
So we were voting that one through six were all things that we were supportive of, correct? That's.
Well, we did vote on that, you did vote for the childcare supplement.
Oh, okay. Well, I meant, I meant to include that, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so the local businesses would create like employment too, like we could have something where the businesses would distribute to their employees because I would hope with this money, we can like reward people that have been working more so.
The people, I think.
Exactly. I mean, I understand the people that can't work, which are in disability, but like people that just choose not to.
And if you have more people working, you'll have more need for the childcare center.
Exactly. But hopefully we could kind of go in that direction with the number one, I mean, with the distributive funding to local businesses. And it says and residents, but I'd like more distributed funding to local businesses or employed.
Lawyers.
Yes, employee, yeah.
So at the very, very least, I guess, I'd like to be able to, I can work with Brian on this, follow up and first of all, see if that's a program available through the state. Because the state's taking in a lot of revenue from this and see if that's, they have an established program that would be better suited.
Yeah.
But yes, yeah, I can follow up on that.
So we did the all in favor part thing, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Mm-hmm.
What else is left? Council comments?
One thing, I'm, I really didn't pay a lot of attention to what was going on with the harbor development of their plan and rules that were made for the harbor, but this council needs to make a decision. I think it's time to limit or just plain stop the board. Maybe what we have, but no more. We need to look at credit checks and background checks on people before we allow them to do things. People get thrown out of Sean C. Prandor court, they shouldn't be able to just go buy a boat and come into our harbor on a boat and think that we're going to end up eating, we gotta, we have to stop this. All of the, the last few that have come in have all been people who can buy too much or have other serious problems that cause problems for the police over and over and over at EMS. Harbor is dealing with them on a daily basis. They all have dogs, there's dog crap from one end of that dock to the next, ready to do something about it. They all have dogs. There's dog crap from one end of that dock to the next, not ready to do something about it myself. It's not good at all. It's unbelievable how much dog crap there is on the, on the floats. And as part of their thing where we go to approve that, we really need to look at even regular mortgage, people wanna come board their boats here. We have a right to do credit checks and stuff on those people to make sure we're not gonna get stuck with some piece of junk boat. We need to start being more realistic with what we're doing. We also need to quit hauling wood boats because we're gonna get stuck with wood boats. Quit hauling them in Washington years ago unless they had a certified person who could work on that boat. Say, I'm gonna have it fixed in this much time because I got the feeling we're gonna get another one that's just sitting there. That's, I know it's gonna end up coming before us, and those are some things I should have been more involved with coming up to the meetings those guys have with Johns, but those are some thoughts here. It's, I went down there yesterday, the new one, and there was crap all over the dock. The dog is sick. I think it has parvo because it's bleeding, its rear end. And it's gonna end up killing a bunch of other dogs. I'm sure it has no shots. And the people on the other side with the dogs, it's the same thing. It's horrible, horrible. I mean, the lease law needs to be one hundred percent on the dock enforced, but we can't have people living on the dock with dogs. It's crazy. Here's my council comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't we have an ordinance on livable boards? As far as having a maximum amount?
I don't think we have a maximum.
No, there's a limited amount of wording about livable boards in the, in the Title IV. It's, it's not real clear. There's not really any teeth in it.
Right, we need to make it very clear and put serious teeth in it. That's what this council needs to do.
I think the provision that, you know, can help influence that is that boats have to move.
Well, that's not the only provision. You know, throw a, a board on the back of a forty foot boat, it can move. They've been playing that being a Juno, but they finally gave up that one too. It's like, no, it's more than that. Just being able to move. We need productive boats here.
That's, I mean, it has to move in a productive, in a fashion that would, that would fit the intent of the boat. As in, you know, an inboard, it should run on the inboard, not throw a six horse kicker on the back of it. That doesn't qualify.
I've dealt with that, Mike. I've, I've had some, some vessels that tried to do that with, you know, just put the kicker on the back and we, we put our foot down to that. So I've, at the same time, I've had some of them that, that can move on their own. One of our biggest problem boats right now, he, the boat does run and he can move it when he wants to. So it's as far as playing an inactive vessel, I've already kind of went down that route with, with a lot of, a lot of boats. And that did help clear out some of the, some of the airlift boats and we got rid of two or three at least in North Cove with that inactive vessel. Proving, what we did was we made them prove seaworthiness, that they could leave the harbor on their own power and come back in. And we got rid of the Ann Margaret, we got rid of Carl Kirkshane's boat and the Sea Fox, which was Steve Anderson's boat. So that did, it did accomplish something, but, but there's several other boats that are livable boards that seventy-five bucks a month and they pay their mortgage and they're in the harbor. It's one step above homelessness. There are several livable boards that I, I love having down there. There's some great people that live on their boat that caused absolutely no problem, that, that helped the harbor. There are some, some problems.
Our ordinance needs to have teeth and we need to be able to evict people and those kinds of, we have to have some strong language and.
Credit check and eviction ability would be nice, but.
Can you do something with the run ins with the law? I mean, can that be written in there, you know?
And the one, one EMS was down there.
Weekly, daily, yeah.
Yeah, always a daily. But anyway, something like twice a day. We, livable boards down there do serve a purpose, keeping an eye on those boats.
Yeah.
They've saved many boats from sinking. They've stopped fires, I mean, and they've reported fires. So you have eyes there in the harbor, which is kind of beneficial. And it does have a drawback, but it's had its benefits also. It's, it's very hard.
But that's why we need to be able to.
Screen them.
Yeah, have a strict screening.
We need to be able to screen them and if they become an issue like the Jester has, then we need to specifically be able to tell them, you have to leave. And I don't know how to go about that, whether it's legal or not, but we need to look into the possibility of being able to do that.
Could you have like a meeting with the livable boards that are a benefit to the harbor and harbor staff? Like, could you have a meeting to draw up this ordinance? Because like the credit check may possibly kick out some of our more, our desirable livables. No, the desirable too. I mean, it's possible. So that's why I'm saying we might want to draw in them because you don't want to inadvertently.
I don't think the credit check is gonna bother the good ones that are down there at all.
Okay.
They're all, no, they, so those, the people he's talking about that help things are.
I mean, I've, I've got a tenant who's fantastic, been with me for ten years. And the reason he's been with me for ten years is because his credit is he's very bad with money, but he's a great tenant, you know, and I overlooked the credit check because anyways, so. Credit checks come sometimes.
I can, I can look into some, some livable board policies. I've, I've done it in the past, but I can do it again and look at, look at other harbors' policies. There's the Harbor Advisory Committee. We've talked about possibly having like a quota. You know, eight livable boards or twelve livable boards or whatever, having a cap. And you don't get to move into the harbor until there's an opening. That's an idea.
And like I said, our, our premium, we have all sorts of people who want to come here in their boats. Who are gonna be productive, you know, they're gonna make a hundred thousand dollars a year and spend a big piece of that money here. Those are the people that are on the waiting list. And we don't need to let people just come in here.
Spot.
Yeah.
Cars, do they open or?
No, most of them are pretty, pretty good about, I mean. For some of them, it's keeping them off the street to be honest with us. The most affordable way to do that.
Yeah.
And some of them are really comfortable and could live wherever they want to, but that's where they choose to live, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big mixture.
Exactly.
I, I think some rules have, you know, if the police are called X amount of times for, in a twelve month period or something like that would be really nice or something, just, but I, yeah, I don't have any teeth at this point, so that's, that's my problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to discriminate against anybody or whatever, you know, but at the same time, if the, the police is what really caught, I mean, and the, the dog, good thing, that's not good. But if the police being called down, we don't need, that, that's not helping our city.
Or if EMS gets called to the same boat, you know, five times a week.
Heck, it's hard then, because then if somebody has a health problem and then they're straight afraid to call EMS because then they'll get kicked out of their livable board status.
If they have a health problem because they took the bottle up all day and pass out on the dock, it's a whole different problem.
Then call the police when the EMS comes. There goes your, there goes your police report. I feel like the police one's a giant red flag and very justifiable.
Come up with something on.
Yeah.
We're meeting, we're meeting on August twenty-sixth, Harbor, maybe, so put something together for the recommendation.
That'll be good.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
I'm getting crushed out here.
You made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ten seconded it.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, John, opposed.